All right, first off, we're gonna do the swearing in ceremonies. I was sworn in by the city clerk today, but we have the deputy city clerk is here, Krista Miller. We'll swear in the city clerk Catherine Friski.
Barb wants to be sworn in too.
Is Barb here? Oh, there she is. All right, Barb looking bigger is here as well.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I say your name.
I am Yvonne Rusk.
I swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of city clerk and city treasurer.
The duties of city clerk and city treasurer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. All right, I'll leave it up to you aldermen if you want to go one at a time or all together.
I'm good as a group.
Okay. Head down there. It's First District Steve Kirkowski, Third District Mark Verhalen, and Fifth District Ken Gail.
You have to try to do it together. Yeah. Hi. Raise your right hand and say, "I say your name."
I say your name.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of all the men.
Duties of all the men.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, everybody. Good luck to everybody on their next term. Just real quick, just want to make a quick announcement. There's a shred drive at City Hall parking lot this Saturday, 9:00 to noon. So if you have any papers you want to have confidentially shredded, show up for that. And also, at the same time concurrently is a food drive at the community center from 10:00 to 2:00. So help those folks out if you can. At this point, we'll call the meeting order and roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Alderman Bukavich is excused. Alderman Verhalen.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is the approval of the minutes of April 6, 2015.
Gail will move to approve minutes of the meeting of April 6, 2015.
Guzekowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item four is election of common council president. I'll turn it over to the city attorney Larry Haskin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The election of the common council president is one that can be conducted by secret ballot and has always been conducted by secret ballot here in Oak Creek and I think in most communities. The process the common council is going to follow is this. The mayor's gonna open up the floor for nominations, and then any of the aldermen can nominate any of the, any alderman for the position of the common council president. And you do that not by a motion, but by simply saying, "I nominate a particular alderperson." That person's name is then placed in nomination. Some, another alderman could place a second name in nomination. At some point in time, the mayor can ask for, "Is there any further nominations?" And if there's not, then it would be appropriate for one of the aldermen to make a motion to close nominations. That motion then is seconded, it's approved, and then we proceed to the election. And the election is done by secret ballot. We have five aldermen here this evening, and so the successful candidate needs three votes. That's what our ordinance provides for. It's a majority of those members that are present here at the meeting.
You have to be present to be nominated?
Uh, no.
All right.
So, Mayor, if you want to open up the floor to nominations?
One question. You said you have to, one of the aldermen has to make a motion to close nominations. Do we have to do a roll call on that or just a motion to close?
A motion, and then a second, and then a roll call.
Okay, all right. So at this time, I'll open it up for nominations for common council president. Alderman Verhalen.
I nominate Dan Bukavich for common council president.
Okay. Alderman Kirkowski.
I nominate Ken Gail as for common council president.
Any other nominations? At this point, any motion to close the nominations?
Guzekowski will move to close nominations.
Alderman Guzekowski's.
I'll second.
Toman seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Who's got the, oh, you got them out already?
Yeah, they should have them. They have them.
Okay, you have your.
Bukavich. Gail.
My count, Gail has three, Bukavich has two.
Correct.
Congratulations, Ken, on being our next common council president.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Any comments before we move on?
Onward.
All right. Moving on to item five. It's a resolution number 11611-042115. A resolution of appreciation to James Ritz's Third District alderperson. I will read that resolution. Whereas Jim Ritz was appointed to position of Third District alderperson on May 14, 2012, and elected to the position on April 2, 2013. Whereas Jim Ritz during his two terms in office served on the Community Development Authority, License Committee, Traffic and Safety, and Cable Advisory Commission. And whereas Jim Ritz has served the best interest of the city and the residents of the Third District, being accessible and responsive to the requests for information or assistance. And whereas the city of Oak Creek has benefited from his positive contributions to city government as an alderperson with significant business experience and a willingness to work with the members of common council to move the city forward. Now therefore, be resolved by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek for and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek, their sincere appreciation be and the same as hereby extended to James Ritz for his service to the city. Yet further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to James Ritz, introduced and adopted this 21st day of April, 2015. Motion on that?
Gail will move to approve resolution 11611-042115. Resolution of appreciation to James Ritz as Third District alderperson.
Verhalen, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Just personal thanks to Jim. He did a great job in his one and a half terms as Third District alderman, and he will be missed. Moving on to item six. It's a council proclamation number 15-03. It's a congratulations to Jarvis Meyer for receiving the Eagle Scout Award. Is Jarvis or a representative of his family here? Okay, we won't, we won't read it. We have a plaque that we just have to have one of the aldermen sign off. I'll present it to them when they come in, or I'll drop it off at their house. But it's a significant thing to be an Eagle Scout, and it's something that we always try to recognize and honor. You always do a service project, and I'm sure his is worthy of the achievement. So congratulations to Jarvis on that. Do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
Motion on six.
Kirkowski will make a motion regarding council proclamation number 1503. Congratulations to Jarvis Meyer for receiving the Eagle Scout Award.
Gail will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item seven is a public hearing request by Go Right Way to rezone the properties at 7433 South 10th Street. Actually, all the addresses as listed, from B4 Highway Business and RS3 Single Family Residential to M1 Manufacturing, with a conditional use amendment to expand the current bus operations in the First District. City clerk will read the open, or the public hearing records.
Public hearing number one is to consider a request by RJ Bast, Go Right Way, to rezone the properties at 7433 South 10th Street, 7380 South 13th Street, 7444 South 13th Street, 7460 South 13th Street, and 7480 South 13th Street, from B4 Highway Business and RS3 Single Family Residential to M1 Manufacturing, with a conditional use amendment to expand the current bus operations. The applicant is RJ Bast, Go Right Way. The property owner is city of Oak Creek. There follows the legal description. The date of the notice is March 26, 2015.
Carrie or Pete? Carrie?
Good evening. My name is Carrie Papalbon. I am the planner for the city of Oak Creek. I did notice that there is a, an error in the notice. The property owner is not the city of Oak Creek. It is, in fact, RJ Bast of Go Right Way.
Thanks for clarifying that.
On the screen is a location map of the subject properties. On March 24, 2015, the Plan Commission recommended approval of a rezone and conditional use permit amendment for private bus, van, and sedan service, storage, and maintenance yard, which is an expansion of the current conditional use on the properties owned by Go Right Way. The council approved a CSM for these properties on March 3, 2015. They have provided a concept plan, which is on your screen right now. Within your packet are conditions and restrictions that were proposed and recommended for approval by the Plan Commission. I will just point out a couple of those items that are in the conditions and restrictions. On page two, under 3A, access to South 13th Street shall be coordinated with Milwaukee County. On page four, under J, there is a section on buffer yards. On page five, there are specific building and parking setback requirements for this particular property. Under nine, signs, all signs shall conform to the provisions of 1706, 0706 of the municipal code. And finally, under 10, permitted uses, private bus, van, and sedan service, storage, and maintenance yard. Under time of compliance is the usual 12 months from the date of adoption and expiration within that 12 months, if not substantially completed, which is more than 50% complete. The recommendation is that the common council adopts the ordinance approving the rezoning of the properties and the conditional use amendment. This is a public hearing. Those wishing to comment regarding the subject of the hearing are asked to approach the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record. All comments should be addressed to the council. This public hearing is now open.
I'll make three calls for public comment on this item. First call. Second call. Third and final call for public comment on item six. At this time, I'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to, actually, that's item five. No, actually, item seven, sorry. We'll move on to item eight, which is the actual consideration of the ordinance number 2762, and open it up to questions or comments from the council. Alderman, Gail.
Carrie, yeah, maybe you folks probably know. Carrie is the, the expansion, obviously, of the west along 13th Street. Is that gonna be a paved surface through the entire property?
Not to the entire property. There is some area that will be retained for stormwater purposes and for buffer zones and green space required.
Okay, so what's green up there and blue and blue will be?
Conceptually, yes.
But everything that's gray will be paved?
Yes. There are some areas that are currently paved. In fact, the, the current bus operations are.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that. I'm just worried about the expansion.
So it'll be expansion up into the.
Okay, and the green space currently is what? What is it, is it empty bear field, agricultural fields, or is that to be planted in cover?
There are two completely vacant parcels that were part of the CSM to combine, and there's one parcel with a house that will be raised.
And we've obviously got a landscaping plan to.
We will. This is just a conceptual plan.
Okay. And the, there's no road on the south side of that property, right?
That's correct.
All right. That's all, yeah.
Other questions or comments? Alderman, Verhalen.
I know I'm new here, and I'm really not up to speed on a lot of these things yet, but I have a couple of questions as to the zoning. And I don't know if Larry, you can maybe answer my question. Is M1 the only zoning that, having a bus company there, is it the only zoning that was available to them, or?
Don't know offhand. I would suspect the staff knows.
The original conditional use was for the M1 district. They are in a manufacturing district currently. That is in the south, north branch? South branch?
Is there existing property zone M1 also?
I'm sorry?
Is there existing property zone M1 also?
Yes.
It is? All right. And then the second question I had, I wonder if you could expand the overhead there to show the homes on the west side of 13th Street? And my question is, and this, I guess, has to be worked out with the county as well, but I'd like to make sure that the homes on the other side of the street aren't impacted by the buses going in and out of those driveways, i.e. headlights and whatnot. Because I know buses, especially during the wintertime, they start their routes relatively early, so, I mean, you don't want to make it a hardship on the people that are living across the street, that's for sure.
At the Plan Commission meeting, I can tell you that representatives from Go Right Way were talking about having their proposed driveways onto 13th Street line up with existing driveways, specifically with the church. I'm not entirely certain where the southern driveway would be.
Well, it showed two ingress and egress things, I guess, proposed on there. That's why I want to make sure that the homes across the street aren't impacted by the traffic coming in and out of there. And then I was wondering if there's any on the landscape plans. I know it's kind of early for that, but if there's a proposed berm to be across the frontage on that property, so the buses aren't really in full view of the street there.
We don't have a landscaping plan, but a berm is going to be required, and the applicants are aware of that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Just a mark on the berm and the driveways that was all discussed at Plan Commission, and we did make them aware of the concerns for the neighbors on.
All right. Anything else? Motion on eight.
Kirkowski will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2762, approving the rezoning of the properties at 7433 South 10th Street, 7380 South 13th Street, 7444 South 13th Street, 7460 South 13th Street, and 7480 South 13th Street, from B4 Highway Business and RS3 Single Family Residential to M1 Manufacturing, with a conditional use amendment for a private bus, van, and sedan service, storage, and maintenance yard.
Guzekowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Under new business, item nine is a presentation by Smith Group, JJR, and a motion eventually to approve the Lake Vista Active and Passive Recreation, community park and playground, terrace, and access to lake. 50% construction plans in the Fourth District. Welcome.
Jerry. Jerry, you want? City administrator?
Just as Dave is preparing his slide, make a couple of comments. JJR and their staff has worked very hard, along with Pete here to my left and Carrie. And we have a number of members from the ad hoc committee. I think there were eight members that worked very hard in developing these plans. So thanks to everybody who's been involved. I know Alderman Guzekowski from the council has been at all of these, and several members, at least two members from the public. So raise your hand a little bit. So I think this is a really good progress. I think it's an exciting plan, and Dave will do his presentation. And then Carrie and Pete, I'd like to have them answer questions and take you through this.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jerry, and thank you for having me here. If you want to skip to the next slide. Oh, boy, we have some graphical issues it looks like here, but, yeah. Oh, that's interesting. But anyway, this is a slide that I showed back in October with, when we initially kicked off the, the project here. And I just wanted to go back to it to talk to you a little bit about the progress we've made and, and where we've come from. As, I think this project kicked off back in October, when the council authorized, I believe it was $14.6 million for improvements to the, the entire 250 acre lakefront site. That included about $5.5 million for creation of a community park and development of the, of the bluff face with a series of trails and other amenities. Since that time, we've gone through basically a four-step process, including programming, development of a consensus plan, bringing that plan back to the council, and then, once again, I apologize that that's difficult to read, but then moving forward with the, the construction drawings and developing the documents. The programming phase was done mostly back in November and December, when we developed a series of drawings outlining a whole variety of different uses for the site. Everything from baseball fields to, you know, just open space to a number of other possible uses. We met with a group of stakeholders on two occasions and presented the three diverse plans and basically heard what ideas people liked, what ideas maybe weren't as well accepted. From that, we moved on to the next step, developed a consensus plan that synthesized some of the best ideas that we heard from those meetings. We brought that back to another meeting and basically fleshed that out into a schematic design, which we brought to the common council, I believe, on December 16. Since that time, we've been diligently working in our office and also working with the design committee, as Jerry mentioned, to develop these, develop details, refine the path layouts, things like that, and really make this a nice place. Next slide. I mentioned some of the initial programming inputs. These are some of the common themes that we heard of what people wanted to hear. Flexible recreational areas as opposed to a hard-programmed site, such as a baseball field. There's a desire to create some topography out there, hills, that sort of thing, just given what a rugged site it is. The winds and everything else provide some sheltering from the winds, that sort of thing. Desire for buffered playgrounds, shelters, desire for shelters for a multitude of functions, creation of looping trails, providing access to the bluff, some sort of vehicular pull-off where you can sit in your car and overlook the lake, opportunities for winter recreational activities. There was an acknowledgement of the need for competitive baseball fields, and there was a lot of discussion. And I believe there's, you know, an opinion that that is needed in the city, but it was decided that because of the size and everything else, this was not the site for, for that exclusively. And then, of course, the entire project should support and enhance the capability of private investment in some of the adjacent areas. So this is the consensus plan, just to remind you of, from what we, we came up with. On the, on the left side was the plan that was finalized back in, in December. It included a number of features, everything from an upland pavilion to the playgrounds mentioned, to, you see the trails on the bluff, and a number of, a large flexible recreational facility in the middle. The image on the right side is kind of a schematic drawing to show how the plan has, has generally evolved but maintain, remained true to the schematic diagram. Just as, as an example, the north parking lot. We showed a rectangular parking lot before. Now we've evolved that into a little more curving geometry to focus the, the views inwards rather than outwards. And we've moved some of the, you know, the pavilion around slightly to address some of the ongoing cap issues. The bluff vista point that you see on the far east side of the site, we've rotated a little farther up to address safety issues, so, so people pulling in and off the, the pull-off have longer sight distance. So we've been working on refining that concept, so it works with engineering and it works with the cap constraints that are out there and everything else. Next slide. I mentioned the community input. This has not just been an effort done by our office. We've, we've worked pretty closely with city staff and also the design committee, as Jerry mentioned, a number of whom are here. Don, Kathy, Jerry, Chris, Ann, Rosemary, Chowsey, and Steve have all provided great input. In fact, we've, we've had a few meetings internally and had a few things pop up, and we said we'd address it after the meeting. We get to the meeting, and it's the first thing that comes up. You know, why, are people gonna have to walk through this mess of people in the pavilion to get to the restroom? Maybe we need a trail going south, and, you know, so we'll adjust our design for it. We've had about four sessions to date. I think we've met on average probably every three weeks or so. We've done things like Pete and Carrie conducted a preference survey with the group, showing a variety of materials, showing a variety of playground equipment, and just gotten, gotten a sense of everything from colors to stone types that, that people like to see. And we've kind of continued through that process. We focused on architecture of the buildings, what type of amenities we should have, like I mentioned, the playground equipment and layout. And then one other interesting feature that Pete and Carrie have, have taken on is they conducted a, a survey of, of second graders at Edgewood Elementary, gave a whole bunch of images of different playground equipment, and said, you know, "What do you like?" And I believe Pete, what, 300 kids were surveyed, 500 kids were surveyed. They came back with a highly scientific survey, and a lot of real good results, real interesting results, how kids see this versus adults see it. And it was a real successful project, I think, for the school itself, and it really did help inform some of the playground equipment that we, we chose. So real, real interesting process. This is an excerpt from our 50% plans. This basically shows the grading plans. It shows a lot of stuff going on, but those swirly lines basically are contours, showing where some of our, our grades are going, and shows the general layout of the upland park. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through each of those, but I did want to talk about some of the opportunities that were being achieved through our plan. We're opening roughly 37 acres of public space through this, this project, areas for people to come and play or, or hike or whatever. We're gonna provide access to roughly 900 feet of stabilized lakefront along the base of the bluff. We have over two miles of recreational trails. That's probably closer to three miles if you extend the work along Lake Vista Boulevard all the way back to Fifth Avenue and southward to Bender Park. We're gonna have about three acres of flexible recreational fields that can be used for sock, things like soccer, flag football. I don't think it's too big here yet, but my son's a lacrosse player, and I look at that, and it'd be great for, for lacrosse or a multitude of other activities. We're providing a pavilion in the northwest section that will accommodate roughly events of up to 50 to 60 persons. More in nice weather, when we can set up a tent outside. It could possibly accommodate up to 100 to 200 people. So it's, it's gonna be a revenue generating facility, something that'll be great for the Parks and Recreation Department. We're providing about six other shelters for picnicking or other events at various locations around the site. We've got, on the site itself, 160 parking spaces, plus, I believe, is it 30 additional on-street parking along Lake Vista Drive itself? Plus, there's access to probably another 150 in Bender Park for, for large events, if there's a fireworks show or another event such as that.
Is there any accommodations being made for grass parking if we would need it?
We have not designed a hardened surface or anything like that for grass parking, but I think that's something that's commonly done. If there were a fireworks show and there were a need for, for, you know, additional parking, then, you know, the, the recreational field certainly could serve as a, as additional parking or a section of that. And then there, there's also, you know, there, there could be traffic, traffic measures that could be accommodated, so there could be additional parking lot along the street or along the new north-south street. So I think, I think we can accommodate any event that would be, be undertaken. As mentioned, there, there are two new playgrounds. There's, and I'll show an image of this a little bit later, but there's a traditional playground with traditional equipment, and we're also looking at creating an adventure playground in the woods farther to the south that's maybe a changing playground from year to year, different activities that could be done by Eagle Scout groups or, or things like that. Diversity of recreational opportunities such as bird blinds and, and other features. And throughout this, we're being sensitive to the ecology of the area. We've provided a number of biofiltration areas. We've provided permeable pavers in the parking lots, so it's very progressive design in terms of, of stormwater management. And a number of the EPA and DNR have recognized that, and they're funding a large part of the stormwater management aspect of this. So just highlighting a few areas. This is the northwest area of the site. The block that you see in the square in the second image is the upland pavilion that's being developed, the 50 to 60-person area. You can see how we've kind of joined it with the playground area and some of the, the other areas. We're working with Rinca Chung architects who are developing the design, and there are some, some graphics shown of some of their early renderings of it. are some graphics shown of some of their early renderings of it. Program, right now, we're looking at about 3,000 square feet, 50 to 60-person assembly space, catering kitchen, so it can accommodate wedding receptions or small events such as that, a number of support spaces. There are going to be both interior and exterior restrooms, so people using the facility on a rental basis can use the interior restrooms, but there's also access for people using the playground or the rec fields or bikers coming by as well. So...
Just a quick question. I know it's challenging when you have natural sites like this, but wheelchair accessibility, is that something that we've considered?
Yes. Everything we're doing in here, we're putting an eye towards ADA accessibility. The pavilion will be fully ADA accessible, the playground will be ADA accessible. In fact, that's one of the things that came from our design committee in laying out the playground. We had a zip line on there, and there was some concern that, you know, people may want to use that even if they're, you know, in a wheelchair, and so we've accommodated that by providing part of the rubberized surface to one of the landings. So, we're doing everything with a close eye towards ADA accessibility.
Even that woodlands thing, if there's some way that we can, because I mean, that's the biggest challenge, right, for a wheelchair, to get into areas that they typically wouldn't get into. So if we can have some way of having a flat surface so they can actually get into the wooded areas, that'd be a great experience.
Yep. We're making all of the walks into that area concrete, and I believe they all meet ADA slopes. There will be some areas in there that are mulch trails. It'll be a little bit more difficult, but there will be general access to all of the nodes in that area.
What are we doing? Your image, you know, looks cool, but what are we doing for, it's got a lot of glass, a remote site?
Yep.
So, how are we going to protect the place after hours?
Security-wise, or?
Access-wise, is it, we anticipate this road being open 24 hours a day, Carrie?
It's a city road.
Yeah. So, I'm sure you guys are looking at that, but...
Yeah, that's something we'll have to discuss with the, you know, with the police department.
A lot of glass, a remote site.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and there's also issues with the glass with, you know, we want to make sure it's energy-efficient and everything else, too. So, we're in the very early stages of the architecture on this, and Rinca Chung has designed a number of buildings like that, so we'll be talking with them through the process and make sure all those concerns are addressed. Few images of some of the playground equipment. Once again, the block on the upper left there is the location of the pavilion, and basically the playground area, as we've laid it out right now, has a couple of areas that are intended, one area to accommodate younger kids, two- to five-year-olds, and the larger space towards the middle is more for the five-to-12-year-old age group. And you can see some of the playground equipment that's been chosen. It's got a mix of climbing equipment. We've also, one of the things that was real popular in some of the images we showed were our chimes, like musical instruments that kids can chime on and, you know, they're very popular in other areas, so we're integrating a mixture of those as well. Just a few other features here. The, in the lower right is the overlook area I talked about. It accommodates about 30 parking spaces. It'll also have a series of terraces for people to go out, take wedding pictures overlooking the lake, just picnic, you know, things like that. We're also developing some very nice, some high-level signage for the area. On the upper left is an image of a bird blind. We're looking at designing a couple bird blinds. We've heard, one of the concepts we heard was there's a lot, this is a very popular area with birders, and doing some research, this is a very popular flyway, especially in Bender Park. There have been hundreds of species of birds identified in there, and it's a great opportunity to get people out there and do some birding. I just wanted to talk about the bluff trails a little bit. This shows the trail layout as it exists right now. What we're doing is trying to take advantage of the existing, there's a gravel road out there now that was built, basically a construction road. It's at a pretty gradual slope for most of it, so we're going to be paving that road, turning that into a trail and to a very nice bluff overlook on the south end, and then that'll continue to the south, all the way to the base of the bluff for emergency access. In addition to that, we're putting basically a switchback path that you see going through the middle of it, and that will be designed for ADA accessibility, so persons with disabilities can get on the bluff and enjoy the views. On the north end, I don't know if you can see in the middle there, but we're looking at creating a, basically a wooden deck, a resting place where you can sit, look over the lake views, you know, and take a rest before you start hiking back up the hill. And then we're proposing another shelter a little bit farther to the north. So, Andy and I were just out there before the meeting, and even on a day like this, it was beautiful. When you got to the top, you got a little breezy, but we're, you get a little more excited about this the more you go out and actually take in the vistas and see what's there. I just wanted to give you an update on the project status. As Jerry mentioned, we submitted 50% construction drawings to the city on April 13th, and Andy and I met with Mike and his guys earlier and kind of walked through those plans. We're still coordinating with some of the roadwork to make sure, you know, everything is going together as it should be. We're targeting advertising this for bidders on June 15th with a bid opening date about July 6th. Hopefully, target award the second meeting in July, which would accommodate construction beginning in early August. What we're hoping for is we can get all the grading done, get the paths, at least the base course in this year, and get the foundations for the buildings in this year, so we can get topsoil on, get seeding, and start getting things growing. And then if things progress well, maybe we can get some of the paving and everything done this year. If not, you know, that'll continue early next year. The buildings and shelters, we're a little behind on the architecture. Those will probably be advertised in late August, and as I mentioned, our goal is to get the foundations in this year, so construction on those buildings can go on over the winter. Our budget update, as I mentioned, we're working with a $5.5 million budget. Right now, based on our latest estimate, we're tracking a little bit over budget. We're probably 5% to 10% over budget, but we're still carrying a pretty high contingency. We're carrying over $700,000 in contingency, and I think we're being fairly conservative on our numbers for the shelters and the pavilion, so those have to be refined a little bit. So, we got a little bit of work to do, and we're working on tweaking this, but we feel we're still within the range of the budget and without compromising the design intent, you know, we're basically where we need to be. As I mentioned, we're going to be working to refine this as the design continues to evolve. We're also going to be working with staff, and one of the topics we need to take up with the design committee is prioritizing some of these improvements. So, if we do come in a little bit high, what are the most desirable elements of this plan to get people to the site? For instance, maybe we hold off on building one or two of the shelters or pursue getting grants to fund some of the other things if we can't afford everything right now. But our goal is to get the most desirable elements in right now, get people out to the site, you know, get people excited about it, and, you know, and move forward. So, that concludes my presentation. I'll take any questions, or I don't know if you guys would like to add anything?
Thanks, I mean, thanks for the great work. I mean, not only you, but Pete and Carrie, City Administrator, I see Don in the audience, Jerry, that Citizen Committee was very helpful. I know they put in a lot of hours. I went to a few of the meetings, and that's where a lot of those good discussions happen, where we kind of figured out, you know, which way we should go.
Yeah, it's been great for us. The more ideas we hear, the better work we do.
Yep. Alderman, Raylan.
I'm not really familiar with a lot of the plans and stuff that were put forward to the council, because I'm new here tonight, but I did work on a project down at the lakefront before this whole park project was proposed, and that was remediating a lot of contamination out of the wetlands that are existing there. And I was wondering, over the last number of years since that was done, probably seven or eight years ago, what kind of monitoring has been done on those wetlands to make sure that there is no contamination there anymore, or contamination is limited to within their specifications of being legal?
Yeah. I haven't been as involved in that end of it. I know that the site has been closed, meaning EPA and DNR have signed off on the site. There are some very tight restrictions on the soils.
I know it was there, that's why I'm asking.
Let's let the city attorney speak to that.
Okay.
Mark, you referred to the removal action, it was under EPA supervision?
Yep, because the wetlands there were highly contaminated with arsenic, and the remediation that was done there, they found arsenic down to 18 feet. It was remediated to 14 feet, and they put a barrier in there.
Right.
So, based on that, just for the future, I was wondering if there's going to be any type of limited access so people can't really get down on those wetland areas in case there would be a leaching problem or something in the future?
Well, Dave really gave a very good answer, and that is the EPA jurisdiction has been closed. I mean, they've approved the remedial action plan. There's very severe restrictions on, you know, some aspects of the property. The wetlands are basically untouchable. I mean, you can't, you can't go in there, you can't develop them.
I understand it, but my concern is if there was a problem in the future with some type of leaching where they put that barrier in the water, and the water gets contamination in it, so it limits access so people can't go in there and have kids play in the water, have a guy, have his dog jump in the water or something like that, if it comes up bad at some point in the future. I wonder if there's a fence that's going to be around the wetlands or anything like that?
There's not going to be a fence. I think as part of the design, there's going to be some natural barriers that are going to be up, but the wetlands are actually, are going to be a positive feature for the development. And the area, if you show the park area, that doesn't, that's not really where the wetlands are.
I know where the wetlands are.
The wetlands are on the El Paso property, on the Epic property. This park is on the DuPont property.
Yep, but when you look at the road, it crosses the...
There's a crossing.
Right. It crosses, but it's right adjacent to one of the, to right adjacent, it was right on the west side of where that road crosses, was one of the worst spots for contamination on that whole site that was cleaned up. And the bridge is going to be a cross, or I realize that they probably made sure that it was limited to what it would disturb there, but just wonder if there's going to be any, just for, you know, better to be a devil's advocate, I guess.
The capping that's been done and the protective measures have been done, have been done under the supervision of EPA and DNR, they've got all the necessary restrictions in place to protect the human health.
All right.
So, there's really no concern for the, you know, public health and safety of children or adults, and that's been assured to us by those agencies that are in charge of, you know, remediation of contaminated sites. Anything else?
Nope.
Alderman, Toman.
Dave, I know you said you're still tweaking the plans for like that main pavilion. Could we see that again, with all the glass? Is that kind of set in place as to how, where that's going to face and to what direction?
That is still being tweaked to some extent. The location is pretty much set. Because of the cap restrictions, we needed to locate the building outside of the, I don't have a laser or anything, but you can, yeah, Andy can point that out. There's a vertical, basically that's the vertical line where the clay cap exists, where we can't penetrate that cap with foundations or anything, or with a habitable building. So, the building itself is located just outside of that cap limit. Now, the orientation and the shape and everything else are still being tweaked. You know, as I mentioned, this was just developed within the last week and a half.
Okay.
So, we've been working through the design committee to get, they've seen this, we've gotten some ideas from them, but there's certainly opportunities to, you know, move that around and do what we need to do.
The front of that with all the glass that's exposed wouldn't face to the west, would it?
The glass, I believe, is facing more towards the north and east, yeah.
North and east, okay.
Yep.
All right. Okay.
I can just add, right, I can jump in a little bit and say that I know one of the goals for this building is to make sure that we have, that we maintain a presence along the north for the road, and also have, maintain the views to the east for the recreation fields and also to the south, because that was a main concern, that people would be in the pavilion but still be able to look at the playground and make sure that where their kids are, you know, they can still see them, and that's for safety concern.
Are we filling that area at all? Is there any fill being brought in on any of the...
Yes.
There is?
Yep, the playground itself is being filled probably three to four feet because the playground has, playground equipment has footings, and we can't go into the clay cap with the footing, so we have to bring the site up to accommodate that equipment.
Are we using existing soil, or are we still hauling down there?
We will probably be hauling in. I know some material is being hauled in now, and we've been, you know, we've been working to see what we can find.
Yeah, right. And what's, stupid question, but I'm going to ask it anyway, who decided on two bird houses, or blinds, as you, why do we need two, I guess, is my question?
That's a, that's a good question. I don't think there was ever a specific discussion of number of bird blinds. There was a lot of interest in birding in the area, and there's only a certain number of people you can get in one bird blind, so, you know, that may be one of those decisions if we want to reduce costs, that maybe we look at one bird blind rather than two bird blinds.
See the need for two, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's it.
Alderman, Krikowski.
This kind of follows up with Ken said earlier, and I know this would throw a kink in the entire budget process, but when you talk to the police department, they might have some nice ideas with regards to remote alarms for that building, and even without compromising the nature setting of the park, some, you know, some cameras, because it is so remote, the cost obviously may be an issue, but I'd be interested in exploring that idea.
Yeah, and there does need to be an overall discussion about security in general. You know, that's a public road, it's going to be open, but there have been discussions about, do we want to gate off the parking lots, or do we want to gate off the overlook point? I don't have that answer, and it's probably a decision that needs to be, take place in the community, you know, based on how other areas are maintained and served and everything else, so it is something that has to be explored.
Yeah, I mean, security's certainly important, but we're not going to have an open discussion about what kind of security measures to be put in place.
Right.
Carrie?
Well, I can say that both the fire department and the police department were part of the initial discussions back in December, so we're going to continue to reach out to them.
Okay. Alderman, Guzikowski.
Well, first of all, I just want to say kudos to Carrie, Pete, and the rest of the team at JJR for all the work you guys did. You guys really have thought this thing through. There are so many elements that, you know, this is just a glimpse of what's out there, but they put a lot of care and thought into everything that needs to come to make this site an all-inclusive site, something that anybody can use, whether you're in a wheelchair or you're able to walk on your own. JJR's been very responsive, so I appreciate that. I want to also thank Edgewood Elementary, the work that the 500 students did was awesome. It was great to see the responses, just to see how they compared to what our thought process was. I think one of the things that we'll be able to pound our chest about a little bit is, once you see this thing as it comes to fruition, people are going to be clamoring to try to spark out. It's got everything that you need in it, so I think we're going to be very proud of the final product once we're ready to go. So, that's what I've got.
Yeah, I think city attorney has hammered his point home for many meetings and many years. It's an access that we haven't been able to provide for so long. You can probably speak to it better than I can. Well, we just, Jerry and I just looked at a picture from the 1920s of what existed on this property. You got to see it to believe it. I mean, it's a, it was a chemical town, a chemical development, a chemical nightmare, an environmental nightmare. And to see the transformation of what existed there before to what we now have to offer to the people of Oak Creek, I mean, it's nothing short of amazing. I think it's a great story. I agree with Chris. I think that the team did a terrific job in developing these plans, and I think the community just ought to be thrilled and excited to have the opportunity to have access to the lakefront and with these dynamic plans. It's going to be terrific. But the amazing story is the turnaround from what used to be there to what's going to be there in the future. That's the real story here. Any other questions or comments before we get a motion on nine?
Yeah, I had just one more thing.
Go ahead.
That south entrance road that you showed cut in there, does that line up with the existing road to down to Bender Park? Is that a straight shot through there?
You're talking where Lake Vista Drive, oh, the north-south road on the west side here?
No, the one that cuts through Old Ryan Road and...
Oh, yeah, that's Lake Vista Drive, that...
Lines up with the Bender Park?
Yes, that lines up with the Bender Park entrance. Yep. And that's part of the road project that Mike and his guys designed.
Okay.
All right, motion on nine.
Yeah, if I can make that motion. Toman will make a motion to approve the Lake Vista active and passive recreation here in community park and playground. hearing, uh, community park and playground terrace and access to lake, 50% construction plans.
Kuzakowski, go second.
Okay. You get a second? Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski?
Aye.
For Halen?
Because I wasn't here for a lot of this stuff, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Alright, I'm gonna jump to item 20, which is a consideration of resolution number 11612-042115. It's approving a certified survey map for the property at 10751 South Nicholson Road in the 5th District. The applicants are here. Any questions or comments? If there are, if there are none, we'll just need a motion.
I'm still getting to 20 here.
Gail, we'll move to, uh, sorry, one second, Bridget, on the, um, did the deferred assessment issues been squared away, or we're finding a remedy for that, or?
I know, I'm just trying to find the number. Okay. We actually had quite a few this round for this common council meeting that have outstanding deferred special assessments, and so pulling or going through the CSM process is one of the checkoff, where it goes through my department to look for these outstanding special assessments. So we have not received money for any of them yet, but the owners have been notified, and we won't be recording the CSM until we've received the funds.
Applicant and owners aware of that?
Aware of the CSM issue?
Uh, applicant's nodding his head, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
With that said, Gail will move to approve resolution 11612-042115, approving a certified survey map for the property at 10751 South Nicholson Road. Verhalen, seconds.
Alderman, Verhalen, seconds, roll call.
Verhalen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Good luck. Alright, moving back to item 10, it's a consideration of ordinance number 2763, an ordinance to repeal and recreate section 2.3, recreate section 6.23 of the municipal code regarding obstructions and encroachments, to create section 6.27 of the municipal code regarding permissible obstructions, projections, and encroachments, to create section 6.28 of the municipal code regarding permits, and to create section 6.29, I should have you read this, Larry. And to create...
I was having fun listening to you.
Yeah, and to create section 6.29 of the municipal code regarding awnings, canopies, and sunshades. City Attorney asking. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of weeks ago, um, Brian Johnston from the Engineering Department reached out to me and posed a question as he was reviewing the plans for, um, the Main Street buildings, at Drexel Town Square, as to whether or not we allow footings in, in the right-of-way. And of course, we have a suburban community, we don't have zero lot lines, and so we don't. But Drexel Town Square is a, um, development that does have zero lot lines. The whole idea behind Main Street is to have a urban feel to it. So, we, those buildings are gonna be right up to the lot lines. And so really, it triggered, um, a comprehensive analysis of what we do and do not allow, um, in the right-of-way, based upon the fact that those buildings are gonna be right up to the, to the sidewalk. And so what you have in front of you is an ordinance that will accomplish that, and I, I wanna thank, um, Inspection Division, Jeff Lynch, and, um, Engineering Department in particular, Brian and Mike for their, for the work on this. It was put together in rather short order, in order to be able to accommodate the plans that are coming in for the developments along Main Street. So, uh, what this will allow, um, among other things, is in Drexel Town Square alone, things such as roofies, porches, masonry projections, uh, footings, uh, provided they don't, they would, they could only go one foot beyond the, the setback line, but beyond that, subject to the engineers, city engineer's approval. So they're gonna take a look at it and see if there's other facilities underground that might be impacted by it, bay windows, awnings and canopies, um, flowers, things like that. So, those are the kinda things that would be allowed in Drexel Town Square. Previously, uh, we had looked at allowing temporary obstructions, sidewalk area dining facilities. You recall, we adopted that ordinance, wayfinding signs, benches, bicycle parking facilities, and special privilege permits. Those are, were already in the ordinance, and they've been carried over to this new ordinance. And then, historically, we've allowed some obstructions in the public right-of-way throughout the city, and, and those will continue, they're very, they're very limited. But this was a, um, this is a comprehensive ordinance update. We think it, uh, covers the ground necessarily. We, once again, borrowed from the city of Milwaukee, if you go downtown or in Bayview. Obviously, all the buildings there have zero lot lines and are, are right up to the, to the street. We talked to people in the Engineering Department to get their guidance. They recommended a couple of things that are not in their ordinance, that, that we've put into this ordinance. For instance, uh, for the, um, footings in the, in the, in the right-of-way, that the developers gotta submit a shoring plan. There's a permitting process, there's hold harmless agreements, there's fees that have to be paid. So, um, that's what ordinance 2763 is all about. Okay, questions? Alderman, Gail.
Sorry, Mayor, yeah, this was, obviously, this stuff is eye glazing, so I appreciate your effort to try and make some sense of this. Kerry, can you speak to the fact, the extent of, other than 6.27D, is much of the other ordinance that's drafted here already in existence? Or is it pretty much a redline version throughout?
Maybe...
This is a brand-new set of, of regulations here, so this is, this is something that'll be completely added.
Okay, so this is brand-new in its entirety, right?
Well, there's a, there's a couple of, there's a couple of carries, carryovers.
Okay, you mentioned some of those. And are we comfortable with the fact that we've limited enough, Larry? The, uh, the 6.27D just to Drexel Town Square, so folks won't be able to lever those against us in other areas of the city?
So are we comfortable with the fact that, that, that it's covered? That it's only gonna be Drexel Town Square? Yes. It says very specifically that these would be the, uh, obstructions allowed within the Drexel Town Square Mixed Use Plan Development District.
Alright.
Any other questions or comments? Motion on 10.
Kuzakowski, make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2763, an ordinance to repeal and recreate section 6.23 of the municipal code regarding obstructions and encroachments, to create section 6.27 of the municipal code regarding permissible obstructions, projections, and encroachments, to create section 6.28 of the municipal code regarding permits, and to create section 6.29 of the municipal code regarding awnings, canopies, and sunshades.
Gail, a second.
Gail, seconds, roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Verhalen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Item 11 is a motion to concur with the Community Development Authority's recommendation to purchase 47 LED pole-mounted holiday decorations, brackets, and electrical supplies in an amount not to exceed $39,792.72. City Administrator?
Staff recognized with the opening, uh, of the Drexel Town Square project for the 2015 holiday season, that our holiday decorations don't go all the way up to Drexel. Now they stop approximately at Woodman's, uh, so we're looking to extend those further north up to Hall, and then, uh, from Hall on Drexel East all of the way to 94. The numbers you have in front of you would do that, and, uh, continue the current LED-lit holiday decorations that we have, that, uh, the community really likes along Hall Avenue. We actually have, uh, some, uh, pole banner signs as well, makes the money spend a little bit farther, so we, uh, we intersperse those. CDA has recommended the capital expenditure out of their budget, but they've noted in this recommendation, also notes, that a capital replacement and capital maintenance is in the streets budget, and that's how we do that now currently. The original large capital cost is a, is a fairly large cost that's hard to come out of the general fund. The CDA does have adequate funding for this, so the initial cost comes there. Capital maintenance, again, out of, uh, streets, and, uh, same thing with replacements. The LED lights have been great. Uh, I wouldn't have wanted to be the guy who replaced them, uh, because we actually put them in the decorations, so that took some time, uh, but they've, uh, 10 years, I think, we've got on some of these things. They're bright, uh, they, they stay lit, and I think, um, I have talked with a number of you, a lot of good comments from the, from the public on this, and I think this helps open up the, the Drexel Town Square area, where you're gonna see Drexel and Hall is probably the 100% corner, along with Pute's and Hall in the community. So, um, uh, more decorations, the more jolly will be, I think, around the holidays.
Questions or comments on 11? Motion?
Gail, move to concur with the Community Development Authority's recommendation to purchase 47 LED pole-mounted holiday decorations, brackets, and electrical supplies in an amount not to exceed $39,792.72.
Kuzakowski, go second.
Kuzakowski, seconds, roll call.
Alderman Verhalen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Item 12 is a motion to authorize the city administrator to sign a professional services agreement with Graef for grant administration assistance for the idle industrial site redevelopment grant received by the city for the HSA slash freighter project at Drexel Town Square in an amount not to exceed $12,000. City Administrator?
The, uh, last week, I believe, the mayor signed, uh, the grant agreement for the $1 million that we had received for the HSA freighter project, as we've done in the past. Graef, uh, helped us put that grant together, and they have, uh, done the administrative work in providing the reports and the reimbursement for these. So you've got in front of you, uh, a, an agreement not to exceed $12,000, which I think is money well spent. Ultimately, that doesn't come out of our budget. We asked for reimbursement out of the 5th District, uh, which we have in the past, uh, in terms of the writing of the grant, so it will not really be, uh, a net dollar out of our, out of our budget. It'll come out of the $11, uh, so my recommendation would be, uh, that the council approve this, this agreement, and, uh, we've had a very good working relationship with Graef, as evidenced by, uh, real significant success we've had with, uh, with our grant writing.
Okay, Alderman, Gail.
Jerry, just to confirm, that's a one-off expenditure, not an annually recurring?
Uh, it is a one-off, uh, expenditure, and you'll see that I, uh, changed some of the verbiage in the contract, that, uh, it said not to exceed, it's not a time and material, it said not to exceed $12,000. And it's only for this grant.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Motion?
Gail, move to authorize the city administrator to sign a professional services agreement with Graef for grant administration assistance for the idle industrial site redevelopment grant received by the city for the HSA freighter project at Drexel Town Square in an amount not to exceed $12,000.
Kuzakowski, go second.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
Guzy, seconds.
Guzy, seconds, I should say Alderman Kuzakowski. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Verhalen?
Aye.
Item 13 is a motion to provide the city of St. Francis with a credit in the amount of $34,936 for first quarter 2015 contractual payments due to the city of Oak Creek for dispatch services. City Administrator?
Uh, the city of Oak Creek has had a successful integration of the St. Francis dispatch operations into, uh, our facilities, which is, uh, going to result in cost-effective operations for both communities. A lot of hard work, uh, on the part of our IT staff, uh, the, uh, police department staff, particularly in dispatch, to pull all this together. But by all accounts, our, our department, uh, St. Francis Department, the dispatch operations are working very well. So, Tom here in Oak Fire is thrilled they're getting services in terms of dispatch that St. Francis didn't have before, so that's a very good thing. As part of the, um, as part of the, um, switchover, St. Francis incurred significantly more costs than they expected to, and we actually saved some fairly appreciable costs in the first quarter. So what I have in front of you, uh, is, is a request to credit the first quarter bill. Uh, we've got contractually with St. Francis, $235,000 a year for those dispatch services. Uh, I had reported previously to the council, but my estimation, uh, I thought that that would generate $20,000 to $30,000 on a yearly basis, uh, in terms of a, a positive cash flow for us. Well, the first quarter of 2015, we had significantly less costs than we expected. We weren't fully geared up, uh, in terms of staffed for the dispatch operations. In St. Francis, they actually had to bring in, uh, contractual people to do their dispatch operations from January 1st, where we took over their personnel, to when it, it became effective. I think it was on, um, on March 6th. So, I'd asked their administrator put together their cost, uh, and you have those in your packets. They're $47,000, $48,000. I looked at what, um, savings we had in the first quarter. They amounted to just under $35,000. The spirit of the agreement was that this would be, uh, a cost-effective, good working relationship for both communities. And so in the spirit of that, I've brought the recommendation to you. We have no contractual obligation to do that, but I think it's important in terms of our relationship with St. Francis, and particularly if we wanna bring other communities on, which will in, increase our savings over time. The one other point that I do wanna make, um, and I think we made this two meetings ago, there are going to be some fairly significant capital costs that neither community was counting on. We thought we were gonna get a grant from the WISCOM system to buy dispatch councils. That's not going to come to be. That's a cost of $600,000, or nearly, which is gonna be split between the two communities, 75-25. So, we're both going to incur costs that we weren't anticipating at that point. Uh, this helps soften that for them. Obviously, it's a few dollars that, uh, that we could keep in our pockets if we wanted to, but I think it's, uh, in the spirit of the, uh, the agreement. It's council discretionary item.
Where do we find the $37,000?
Um, it's, it's there, it's, we had the savings in the first quarter. So if we looked at what our budget was in dispatch operations, uh, we saved in the first quarter this $35,000.
Alderman, Verhalen.
Um, yeah, I, I stopped at the police department today, and, and they're not really too enthused with this proposal. The savings that Jerry's talking about, from what I gathered, is, uh, savings because they're short a couple dispatch people. So, if we turn around and, and send the money over to, uh, St. Francis and we end up hiring dispatch people, which we're short on now, um, you know, we're, we're essentially subsidizing St. Francis with Oak Creek taxpayers' money, and I, I don't really appreciate doing that, even though we have an agreement with them. If, if they incurred, incurred, uh, expenses that they weren't expecting, I think that's more their problem than ours. And in the, in the, uh, in the sense of keeping a positive working relationship, I think if the shoe was on the other foot, I'm not quite so sure that they'd be sending money our way. So, myself, I'd not, I would not be in favor of, of doing this.
Okay. Alderman, Gail?
Jerry, um, can you, can you give me a little more color on why they incurred the amount of extra expenses in their first quarter than...
Yeah, what, what neither of us really counted on is we had a number of their dispatchers that needed to make a decision in terms of whether they were gonna come on as our employees or not. We didn't hear from those individuals till December 30th, December 31st. So there was no opportunity to be able to replace those folks. They became our employees on January 1st. We were originally targeting to try to meet, uh, the dispatch operations, where we would begin the joint dispatch January 1st. We weren't able to do that, there was a, uh, there was a 90-day extension period in that till, uh, March. That's the date we ended up hitting. So, St. Francis no longer had any employees. All of their employees became our employees as of January 1st, so they had to fill in with contractual temp employees and with, um, uh, overtime from their police, uh, police operations there. So, um, I think you could take the position it wasn't fully, uh, expected or integrated into the contract, and I think that's right, um, but I think that there would be some significant hard feelings, uh, at, at that level. They expected to go in here to be treated fairly, and, and I'm not gonna, you know, expound upon that anymore, but...
So is there an expect, is there an expectation from St. Francis they're getting this money?
No, there, there is not, uh, they do not, uh, they have not been, uh, told that they would. Uh, I indicated to their administrator that my recommendation would be, uh, as it's in front of you tonight, because again, I think this is in the spirit of the, the agreement, but there's not an expectation that, uh, the dollars are due them.
Jerry, the, um, you know, bringing, you have, uh, a good, uh, amount of information here on the cost they incurred as a result of their, having a staff on a temporary basis there, their dispatch effort until it was transferred in March. They did incur some significant...
dispatch effort until it was transferred in March. They did incur some significant costs and their city administrator showed to you for a consultant to help in their expedite their process. Not sure why they incurred costs with the consultant. I understand, we probably, even though we had some overtime, did it ourselves, and why that would have been included in some kind of request for reimbursement. So a little, any color or background on why they felt compelled to include that?
No, I think that, you know, they've brought all of their costs to make the conversion of the dispatch operations, and I don't think that they expected to fully get reimbursed for all of the costs.
Because, I mean, they had to assume if they didn't have to tally it up.
They did, that they would have some, some IT operations to get, to get the consolidation.
The numbers, from what I, from what I added up, the, what the expenses he, their administrator showed you were high 40s. They've, we've spelled out a $34,000, $35,000 reimbursement. That's about a 70, 75% of that totals. Is that, is that something that's close to what our cost share was in our contract or what?
Yeah, I can, I can tell the council that we've still got fairly significant savings that are going to take place in the second quarter. As Alderman Verhalen pointed out, we're still not fully staffed up. That's where the savings are coming in from us. We have four, our part-time people that were budgeted for the entire year, and we still don't have those folks on as we're churning people through from the part-time into the full-time as, as they're coming in and out. So we're going to have savings more than the $20,000 to $30,000 that I had originally indicated, even with this credit for 2015.
Jerry, what's the St. Francis share of the console expense that's been?
25%.
25% of 500 and what?
It's about $600,000, so it's going to be close to 125,000.
And that is, that was unanticipated to both communities, correct?
For both communities, and as I indicated to the council, we're likely going to go out to revolving loan fund or see whether we can get some lower no-cost, two- or three-year financing from Motorola, so we can spread that over '16 and '17, because it's not budgeted in our, in our 2015 budget.
All right. I mean, I understand the spirit. It strikes me as a bit rich. I'd like to hear what the other Aldermen have to say about the discussion.
Is it real savings that we incurred? Are we just?
No, they're real savings.
So we're not, we didn't chew it up with overtime costs?
No, we didn't.
We didn't?
We, we had higher overtime costs than we normally did, but very significantly lower full-time and part-time costs. So I've gone through the budget in detail. These are the numbers. I can assure you they're the numbers.
We're good on the budget.
Hold on one second. Alderman Verhalen.
I heard that as well, that, I heard from the chief today. He called me up after I talked Captain Bolander about it, and I talked to the chief later on today, and they both kind of said the same thing, that their budget is under because they're understaffed and they don't have, they haven't filled a position. But their overtime budget is just the opposite. They're going over on their overtime because the people they do have work and are putting in overtime. So that budget itself is, is running ahead of what it's supposed to be. So, and they did say that when people transferred here from St. Francis, and I might, might be a little bit off on this, but all of the people that were supposed to transfer did not, and the person that St. Francis put on to replace one of their people was a, was a police officer. So, you know, and they paid him overtime money to?
Yeah, that's shown in the legislation.
To do the dispatch, yeah. But I mean, that's, that's who they had to put.
I can tell you these numbers are correct.
I'm not doubting the numbers, but I'm just, I'm just putting out there that, you know, I'm reiterating again, that I don't think that, in the spirit of good faith, you know, I realize we have to work together because it's a contractual agreement that both entities sign onto. But, you know, I feel that each city has to take care of their own problems here, you know, whether it's, it's unforeseen expenses or whatever, you know, because this city sure has unforeseen expenses all the time on things that, that are either bid out or jobs or whatever, and you don't go begging the neighboring city for, for money to cover your shortfalls or something you didn't account for. So I think that it's, it's really wrong to start, start down this road. I really do.
Any thoughts from the other Aldermen? Alderman Kirkowski.
Jerry, had those employees transferred over to Oak Creek in a more timely fashion, would we have been ready to go on January 1st?
We would have been in much better shape. Probably still now would have made the January 1st, but we would have been closer to that date, and St. Francis would have been better able to anticipate the gap, which obviously they weren't. We had practically no time to be able to offset the late decisions those employees made.
Thank you.
Alderman Guzakowski.
My only concern is if we, if we give them concession here, do we, on the road, are we opening ourselves up for other requests if unforeseen things come about? Is the concern I have.
My discussion with my counterpart in St. Francis was this is a one-time first-quarter implementation issue, and from there on in, it's really, the contract guides this. And again, I really think that because neither of us fully anticipated everything that's out there, and I've, you know, I'll say that again, I, normally, the contract's the contract. I don't disagree with that. But in this case, it's hard to anticipate everything that was out there. If we were in a reversed role, I would want to see them treat us properly again, so that we can show to St. Francis, as well as other communities that might want to enjoin us in these operations, that Oak Creek is treating people fairly as part of the process.
Thank you.
Alderman Gail.
Oh.
Alderman Toman.
Yeah. How many positions are we short in dispatch right now?
Well, we're short four full, or four part-time positions right now, and I think we're down either one or two full-time.
Okay, so given that these are savings from those positions that aren't filled, are we, we're running that dispatch area with overtime, correct?
Not, not much. We did, let me, let me put this a different way. What I did is I took the overall dispatch budget, spread it out over 12 months, and said, what would we spend a month? We had significantly higher overtime costs in the first quarter than we otherwise would have expected because we had these vacancies. But we had then the savings from the full-time and the part-time. So again, the number is correct in terms of the $35,000 savings. We're still experiencing those savings in, starting in April, because we still have positions that aren't filled, even with the overtime that we're using. So we're still having significant savings in the second quarter.
So we've subtracted the extra overtime from?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a net. $35,000. Here is net.
Bridget, you're on board with that? The figures have been checked? Given, given that this thing is called joint dispatch, and there are shared expenses between the two communities, it's my opinion that it's fair. I hate to see the money go out also, but if we are experiencing these savings, they should be passed on to St. Francis. That's my opinion. This is joint dispatch.
It is. We're not contractually obligated to do that, but I think it's the, the fair thing to do.
Yeah, okay, that's all I have.
All right.
Sorry, Steve.
Go ahead.
Jerry, just to clarify then, so from a budget standpoint, assuming the dispatch center is essentially fully, eventually fully staffed, you have enough money to pay for that?
Absolutely.
So moving forward, okay, so dollar-wise, and math-wise from a St. Francis standpoint, being caught short on bodies that transferred, their costs really were, the police overtime of about $5,200 and their temp staff of $22,000.
The, the net effect of having St. Francis and Oak Creek jointly dispatch should be savings for us of, I would, about $40,000 to $50,000 this year. It would have been $30, $30,000 without the savings that we've got from the position shortfalls, but I'm expecting it'll be closer to $50,000 at the end of this year. So it's a good relationship. Ultimately, it's saving the community dollars. So the joint operation is an increase in efficiencies, and I think this sets a, a good tone for the, for the agreement.
I do agree that there is some, you know, given its newness and cooperative kind of relationship, there is, there's some part of that factor needs to be considered with this, so.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, someone needs to make a motion on it.
What, I want, I've got one thing to say.
Given there's some, you know, some of us are apprehensive about this, including me a little bit. Could we, we're not obligated to do this now, are we? Could we wait till the second quarter? Is that an option? See where, to see how the numbers line up in the second quarter?
You could.
I'd like to see that. I don't know about.
I think that's a good idea. Like, council okay with that?
So we have to have a motion to table it till when?
If that, if that's the council's intent, table it until, how long after the end of the second quarter do you need?
Ten to 15 days. So, you know, we'd know by?
July?
Yeah, June 15th, probably, July 15th.
Well, we don't have a second meeting in July, so the first meeting in, table it to August 3rd, I think that is. First meeting in August. It's a Monday. You need a motion on it? Yes. All right, we need your motion on it. Before that happens, though, make sure that we communicate with St. Francis that we are just looking for a more complete picture, and that's the date we're going to do it.
Sure.
Uh, how do you want it stated? Just?
Just a motion to hold, item number 13, until the first meeting of August.
Okay, Toman will make that motion as stated.
Second from Verhalen.
Verhalen seconds, roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Verhalen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
All right, 14 is a motion to concur with the mayor's reappointments as followed and as listed, with one exception. G is striked, struck?
Struck, right?
Yeah.
Struck.
That position does not exist, that extra position. All the other ones, there's, there's three new members. Jane, it's actually Janet Ganzalinski is an alternate on, on the landscaping beautification, and then two new members on, on zoning housing board of appeals, and they, I'm not sure if their alternates are, I don't know what their status is, but they're going to be appointments. Alderman Gail.
Oh, sorry, Mayor. So item G would be, that would have been for a citizen appointment, correct?
That's correct.
All right.
Yeah, but that one's struck.
All right.
Okay, so I need a motion in a second.
Gail moved to concur with the mayor's appointments as follows, as listed, sorry.
As listed.
Guzakowski, Gail second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Verhalen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Item 15 is mayor's aldermanic appointments as listed. Any questions or comments? Need a motion in a second. No, I think those are just unilateral. Good. All right, thank you. That's why we pay the big bucks. Absolutely. All right. 16 is held to the next meeting?
Yep.
Is that correct? Okay. Before we go on, is there any, any meetings that, that any of the staff members know of, between now and the next council meeting, that create an issue in terms of?
CDA would be likely, likely held between now and the next. Is there a CDA? I don't have a CDA appointment.
So we wouldn't have an appointment. We do have a built-in quorum of extra people on CDA, so I don't, that wouldn't be an issue.
On Friday.
Oh, yeah.
Personnel on Friday?
Yep.
Is Dan still gone Friday?
I believe so.
He is.
Okay, we only need two on Friday.
Both of you guys going to be there?
Well, can we make one appointment then?
Well, you.
You don't need one. Personnel's only got two on it, as long as you're going to be there.
Yeah, I will be there.
Yeah, we got two on Friday.
So hold till next meeting?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, so we're going to go to 17. All-important trick-or-treat. Consider motion to concur with the celebrations commission and designate Saturday, October 31st, 2015, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM as official city of Oak Creek trick-or-treat. Is that nighttime?
On a weekend night.
Wow, people would be happy about that. That's cool. They listened. That's good.
Wow.
All right, anyone disagree?
Waiting till the calendar.
Check with, off, yeah.
That's a good, that's a good. All right, motion on, on trick-or-treat, 17.
Gail moved to concur with the celebration commission and designate Saturday, October 31st, 2015, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM as the official city of Oak Creek trick-or-treat.
Kirkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Item 18 is a motion to approve the 2015 vendor summary report in the amount of $2,099,091.10. Bridget's here for any questions. Finance director, rather. Any questions or comments for Bridget?
Department because she stepped up in the resignation in my department, and she actually, with myself, completed this accounts payable run. This is also our last accounts payable run in this computer software. So.
Excellent.
Huge help. She was there. We got it through. People got paid. Didn't have any issues other than the fact that your report is printed in very small. She was trying to save paper but was not aware that our system is so spectacular that you can only print that report once, and it goes completely out of the system. So that's why you have such small font.
Okay.
Thank you to Cindy.
Thanks, Cindy, for the great work. Motion on 18.
Yeah, just, Mayor, just to point out for the audience.
Don't forget to push your button, buddy.
Is that better?
There you go.
Item number four on the Bridget summary is obviously a significant piece of this month, this month's or this pay period. Million, almost $1,007,000 for corporate contractors, the general contractor at the Seehall Library and Fire Station projects. So, with that said, Gail moved to approve the 2015 vendor summary report in the amount of $2,099,091.10.
Kirkowski, a second.
Kirkowski seconds, roll call.
Alderman Verhalen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
19 is a hold per the request of the water utility. 20, we already completed. We moved to engineering, which item 21 is a motion to award to Lake Vista Drive and Path Project. Unit-priced contract to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, Wilcom Excavating and Grading, at an estimated cost of $2,447,808.75. Project number 14024 in the fourth district.
Thank you, Mayor. We completed the design on the roadway project, the, as you all know. This is somewhat related to the, the project that JJR and Carrie and Pete presented earlier. It's the lakefront development. This is, I guess you could call this the first phase of the construction of, of the, of the development of the, of the former Dupont and Epic properties. We completed the design and went out for bid. Received two bids, which you see before you, Wilcom Excavating and Grading being the, the lower of the two. And I've got the graphic up on the screen. It's very, very small scale, but it's, it's about a .9, nine tenths of a mile, I guess I should say, roadway, spanning, spanning the lakefront properties. And I can zoom in as, as questions come, but Wilcom has worked in the city on several projects over the years. They did some box culvers for us many years ago. More recently, they, they completed the phase two of the Abashine Park project, and then they were part of the City Hall Library construction team as a subcontractor to CCI during the excavation for the, for the foundations of that, of those buildings. They have experience working on, on sites that have environmental impacts, such as, such as the site that we have here. So we do believe they are qualified to complete the, the work and do a good job for us. So that, that the recommendation is that, that we do award the contract. With that, I take any questions that you have on the bids or on the alignment or the, the project content itself?
Alderman Gail.
Mike, I don't remember where we kind of pegged this to come in at, from a money, dollar standpoint. Do you have a feel for that?
Yes, as the, as the, as the project plan developed and the finance plan developed last fall, we were at $2.1 million for, for this roadway. We, the low bid is, is $2.44 million. What, what happened, and so it's, it's a little disappointing, but not really when you think about where that money comes from. There is, with the park project coming so closely behind this project, we had decided to put the sanitary sewer and the water main in place to accommodate the pavilion building that's going to be constructed. And I think I'll zoom in here one second. I'll show you exactly where that is.
Jerry, your mic's not on. Sorry.
It's on now.
While Mike is zooming in on that, the $2.1 million did not include the extension of water mains and sanitary sewer lines, which have subsequently been added. And we actually added a bioswale to. and we actually added a bio swale to the project as well, and we've also got some pretty significant grant funding for, for this project, and including that bio swale that's going to be announced soon, that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so, so I talked with Matt Sullivan, who was a designer, from his sense, this is really right on when you add those in terms of where the estimate was.
And, Mike, any, any color on why we only had two, did, how many?
Yes, we had, we had conversations with a, a couple of contractors, one before the bids were opening, I had talked with, with one of the contractors that was holding plans, and he had told me that he, he did not intend to put a bid in based on the size of the project, and the size of his company, and, and, and that they had secured work through, through this year, so he, he wasn't looking at taking on a project quite of this magnitude if it was maybe half the size, I think he would've been a little more interested, and I know Sue Winon had, had talked to one of the contractors, that we really did expect to, to bid on this project, and they had indicated that they, they had some initial interest, and, and, and then as they just kind of looked at their, their year as a whole, there were some other projects that, that they knew were, were gonna be out on the, on the streets here, coming up, that they were gonna go after really hard, so they just declined to, to put a bid in on this one, so, yeah, we had, we had, my expectation that we was, that we would get three or four bids, so we, we, we just got the two, so.
You feel comfortable that was, this was competitive at this price?
We, we do, we, we look at the unit prices, I guess what we're seeing is the unit prices for the underground works, so the storm sewer centers were in the water main, those were higher than, than we would have liked to have seen, and we think that that's related to the, you know, the impacted soils, everything that's being constructed out here is, is, has to be done strictly to, to the letter of the law and the deed restrictions that, that we're working under now because of the impacted soils, so, basically, every, every shovel full of dirt has got an assigned place to be replaced on the site, or replaced in the trench, and in specific order, and, and segregated, so that, that, you know, that starts to add up and increases the cost by, by a good percentage.
What's the duration of the, of the activity you expect for this kind, for this particular project?
Uh, we, we expect to be done with this work by mid-October.
Oh, this year?
Yes, oh, yes.
All right, that, that does it for me.
So Attorney Haskins, do you want to add something, Mike?
I was just gonna talk about the, the extensions, that, that building that JJR had talked about was gonna be about this location, if you recall, and, so here's the water, the water main extension is the, the line with the W, the sanitary sewer is, is this, is this line here, again, all going through impacted soils, so it's gonna be a, a little bit slow-going, uh, the roadway itself is, is, is this line here, and it's gonna be a full intersection with Fifth and American, this road currently is the driveway down to the raw water pump station, that will just be a driveway now off of the main city road, uh, this is one of the retention ponds in this area, I can, I guess the other area of, of interest then is the, the new entrance to Bender Park, and let me zoom in just a little bit more here.
That's the path you're talking about?
So, what, what we have here, this is the, this is the driveway currently to Bender Park, and then Ryan Road just, just ends right here, what we have is, uh, the, the main roadway now would be, would continue north across the properties, two-way, two-way traffic, there is a, a slip lane here to provide direct access down out to Bender Park, and that, that curve is designed to accommodate larger vehicles and, and, you know, trailers with boats, and what you see here then is the, the twelve-foot wide multi-use path that's gonna traverse across the site, it extends down to this area, which is really basically that north parking lot of Bender Park, and so that was a, kind of a cooperative effort between Milwaukee County and us, yeah, and that's, that's, that's put in with this, that's part of this contracted work.
How long is that path?
Uh, well, the pathway on, on this project is probably about three-quarters of a mile in length, there's a gap that's gonna be filled in with the park project, so it's gonna tie all together with what, with that, that second contract, that contract that JGR is, is gonna be putting out.
And we're, that goes across county property, obviously.
Yes, it does.
Saying we're picking up the tab for the whole works.
Uh, we are.
Okay, who maintains it?
Milwaukee County will maintain the path that, that gets onto the Bender Park, the Bender Park property, they, they're main, there's an agreement now in place where they are going to maintain that, and they will rebuild it as needed, we are putting in the, the initial construction, and that's fully funded by grant money, coastal, coastal zone management money.
So Attorney Haskins?
Just a couple of points to reassure the council and the public, we have DNR and EPA approval for this roadway, was anticipated in the, in the closure certificate issued by the DNR, the whole capping procedure anticipated the road going in, Mike, you may want to show where we, where we dealt with the EPA on, on, on the crossing, there is a spot that the EPA has jurisdiction, right there, we spent a number of months negotiating the approval from the EPA for that, that crossing right there, and we've got some reporting requirements that we have to EPA Chicago, we have that all in place and ready to go, just wanted to point on the sewer, on the, on the utility property that we've been working on, Mike, there's a sanitary sewer piece that's crossing, Mike can point out where the utility corridor is, there's some impacted soils in that area, where it says SS, and it's sort of a L shape there, there's some extraordinary measures that are gonna be taken regarding that sanitary sewer pipe there, and there's an agreement in principle with Beazer, one of the predecessors in title, on the Canell property, that they're gonna pick up those extraordinary costs.
Okay.
I think that's about all I have.
Does that sanitary sewer end there? It can't, that can't go east, can it? That ends there?
It goes north, does it not?
The, the sanitary sewer, we would be connecting to an existing sewer in that location, and then that all flows to the north directly up to the South Shore Treatment Plant.
Okay, but that can't go east to another pavilion closer to the lake?
Uh, no, that can't, no.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Um, one question was on COSP, that was already covered a little bit, so between the road project and the park project last year, I think we had discussed, this would be a construction site, so right now, when are we looking at opening this up, you know, to the public for use, is this, are we still on the same thought pattern, that it's when the project's complete next, you know, next year sometime?
Sixteen.
I, I think we're probably gonna be opening this project.
Project up, probably fall of sixteen, so as you heard from the park construction, we're gonna try to get some of the landscaping grown in this year, project will finish up into the spring and probably into the summer, next year we'll have a little bit of the grow season, and somewhere between summer and fall next year is where we're gonna be opening up.
Thanks, I, I just wanted to clarify that, 'cause some people are thinking, wow, maybe once the road's in, we can start using it, you know, this winter and walking and whatnot, so I just, I think it's just, bring that up every now and then, so everyone knows where we're at, thanks.
So when you say it's open to the public in fall of sixteen, that's complete access?
Yeah.
Jerry, stop me, stop me if I'm, if I'm going too far, but I, but I believe, I mean, our, our goal, this road will be paved in this year, so while the park may not be completed, it will be, it will be somewhat far along, but people will be able to drive that road and, and traverse that roadway that, that, they can overlook, overlooking the bluff and, and looping back on, on Ryan Road, that, that's, that's engineering's expectation, so tell me if I'm wrong.
The question is, or the point is physically, the public will be.
Able to do that, but does it make sense to introduce the public to that area while we still have a construction zone in the air? Answer, maybe no, so we have the ability to control that access, I think we're gonna have to revisit that late summer into October, so again, that's possible, but I'm not sure that that would be wise for us to do that, one of the concerns we've had all the way along is when we don't have regular folks attending down there, they were raised as the security issues, the kids with the high trucks and the four-wheelers into the park area would not be a good thing while we're under construction, so I've got some concerns about that, so we'll revisit that with the council, but I'm thinking fall of sixteen would be wiser, but we, we can talk about that when the road's near completion.
Okay, so that, that issue, that opening date will come back in front of the council, all right, any other questions?
Steve, I had one more.
Go ahead.
Mike, do you, do you have a feel for what amount of labor is actually as a proportion of this bid versus materials?
Um.
What would typically be on a road project of this scale?
I don't know if you can hear me, yeah, I, I would say that it's probably fifty-five to sixty percent materials and, and the rest labor.
Okay, so maybe a million, give or take, of labor?
Yes.
We're obviously doing this contract bid as prevailing wage, what happens if in fact the, you know, the budget's passed in May and prevailing wage laws change, and is this contractor obligated, or can he, he or she change his compensation system mid-project?
That's a good question, I don't know, the legal question, so Larry, do you know, um.
And would we?
I don't know if they'd be obligated to.
Share in that, or?
Change your unit prices.
If prevailing wage is, becomes part of the budget passing process in May or June of this year with the state, is, this project will obviously be mid, midway through, is, is the prevailing wage part of the bid, has to be paid through the entire project, or could the contractor change his or her payment method?
There's a change in state law.
Yeah, I understand, I, I, I would have to take a look at that, I, it's not something that, that we've researched.
Well, yeah, it's new.
It's, it's, it's brand new, but we'll, we'll take a look at that, I don't have an answer for you as we sit here tonight.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah.
Motion on twenty-one.
Toman will make a motion to award the Lake Vista Drive and Path Project, unit price contract to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, Wilcom Excavating and Grading, at an estimated cost of two million four hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
Kirkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Uh, because I'm not up to speed on this one as well, I'm gonna abstain on this one as well.
Okay, item two is a consideration of resolution number one one six oh nine dash oh four two one one five, approving the Oakfield Village Edition Number Two subdivision development agreement for the design and installation of public improvements at four hundred East Lily Drive, tax key numbers as listed, project numbers as listed in the first district. Questions or comments, Mike?
Uh, this is just, this is an infill development of the Oakfield subdivision, which they would be gaining nine lots and an outlot for stormwater retention, I, I should say two outlots, and there's stormwater retention here as well, the same developer had created three lots previously via CSM, that front right on Forest Hill Avenue, this development agreement, of course, covers all the, the public infrastructure, and that is the roadway extension, which will be connecting Lily Drive and Alyssa Drive, sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, lighting sidewalks, so, so basically full, full urban development. Don't know if I have anything to add, but this is, this is our standard procedure of the development agreement, where they need to put in all the public infrastructure, now, what we've dealt with more recently, we, we know all too well, is the, is how are we handling the final lift of asphalt on the roads, and, and we have changed the language in the development agreement, whereas, council may recall, before, we had a percent occupancy of seventy-five percent, before we would allow or require them to put the final surface lift on the road, and of course, when the residential housing market stalled, we had a lot of developers that, that failed to make that obligation, and, and so we've got some, some legal issues going on right now with them, however, so, the language has been tweaked so that this road will be surfaced no later than two years from final plat, and that would be regardless of, of how far they are as far as building out the homes, now this is a nine-lot subdivision, so we don't anticipate that to be an issue, so we do believe that, that, that we're covered as far as getting this road surfaced, well within that two-year period.
Is this ditch going away? The one that extends from Lily to the Forest Hill that's there currently?
Um, we, we are working with the developer, they, they own this piece, this piece of land there too, which they don't see as a viable, buildable lot, so we are looking, there's, there's being appraisal completed right now, where, where the city would potentially purchase that property, build a, another retention pond, which would help take care of some of the drainage of the existing subdivision up here, and, and by, by that same thought, this, this pond that the developer is putting in does take care of some of the drainage of the existing subdivision up here, so, so we're gonna be greatly improving the, the drainage through here, now, when this goes in, these ponds connect, there's gonna be a storm sewer that will extend along this alignment, and then down and cross Forest Hill, and that will take care of a lot of that, this main drainage ditch will be relieved of, of a lot of the capacity, it still will be a ditch, it will be not quite to the, the size of it is, that it is now, and it would be sotted and remain turf-covered.
Damn, that was a long answer.
And that would make this property owner very happy, and a lot of people, because it is.
The property owner to the west will be happy with that change, is that what you're telling me?
Yes, he, he's, he is, he's very excited about this development.
Good.
From, from what I understand.
That's a good thing, and it's a nice, I mean, if that farm was there, that horse farm or whatever, operated there was forever, and although you, you don't like to see things like that go away, it's actually a nice use of that property to expand that development to the north, any questions or comments? Alderman Kirkowski.
I, I just want to say thank you for, for, for working with these issues, so that that one property owner is, is happy with, because he's had some issues, we've had some issues, so thank you for, for working through all that.
Alderman Gale?
Alderman Guzakowski, I think.
I just, real quick, um, Shepherd.
He did push the button.
It didn't show up, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Operator aired on there.
Probably.
Shepherd, where is, where does that come through on?
Uh, did you ask where Shepherd Avenue comes through?
Yes.
Uh, the next road that, the next main road that we, we would, that Lily Drive extends to is Verdeve, and then approximately another quarter mile then to the, yep.
I was, I was checking, thanks.
Any other questions?
I did have one, Steve.
Go ahead.
Larry, do we have any, any concern with potential action at, an expected water utility meeting on Friday, on, on this particular motion?
Um, I understand that, that, that there's been a meeting scheduled to consider the issue of the looping.
Yeah, does that need to be considered in this, or hell, or?
Um, I, I think that that's, I, I'm not sure, have you been in communication, Mike, with, with regard to?
I, I just know that that's, that there's, there's a special meeting on Friday with the, with the Sewer Water Commission, where they're gonna take up that issue, and, and Alderman Gale, maybe you can, the, the water main is being looped in here, and then I, and then I understand that there was a question as to why wouldn't it be looped in here?
Yeah, the, the Water Utility Commission voted to enforce a long-time agreement that if they ever would move on this, that they would complete the entire infrastructure, so the water main would be extended further west to hook up all the existing mains, there is some potential to revisit that decision.
So I, I, I think we can go ahead and approve this agreement, and, you know, frankly, if that decision on Friday's not satisfactory to the developer, and they choose not to proceed as a result of that, it's just not gonna get signed, or is, is it signed?
The, the development agreement is signed, is signed currently by the developer.
Okay.
Um, so I, would that mean perhaps a supplemental agreement, or does this, is it better to hold this, what, I'm not sure what the best way to proceed is.
I think, I think we can proceed, they've signed it, they've agreed to it on those, on, on whatever the plans that have been approved, that they, the, the plans that have been approved.
been approved, that they, did the plans that have been approved call for that looping?
The plans that have been approved, I, I guess you could say that, that, that the water has not been approved, because that had been approved by the, by the commission.
Okay.
Uh, because the looping is not shown on the plans currently.
Okay.
Any idea what the cost of that looping is?
Fifteen, well, the, the, the gap that is in dispute is approximately $15,000.
That's it? And this, this longstanding commission understanding is in writing?
Apparently not.
So they're going to enforce something that's not in writing?
Given their history with the developer.
I don't care about that. Is, is the, is this claim they're making backed up by something that's written down?
That's what they chose to vote.
What power do we have to?
They, they, under our ordnance, is the, the water and sewer utility right now has complete control and management of their, of their operations. So even without a written agreement, they can just arbitrarily? You know, I, I don't know the history of this, or exactly what the basis for that decision is, and where it stands right now.
From, from my understanding, okay.
My, my recommendation is, hearing all this, that we hold this, wait for the water and sewer utility to make its decision, unless you tell me, Mike, that there's some urgency on the part of the developer.
Well, there, yeah, there's, there's urgency. There's, there's, there's been grading operations that have taken place out there. They would like to proceed on with the, with the utilities. Now, these plans were reviewed by the water and sewer utility staff, and, and I believe they were signed by the staff. And then when the official approval came to the, the Sewer and Water Commission, that's, that's when this was brought up, and now the need for the special meeting.
So, so the plans that were approved did not call for this additional $15,000 worth of looping?
That's correct.
Plans signed off on by utility staff?
Right. But not approved by the commission. It's a little bit of a chicken and egg thing here.
Can we approve this with the mention that, subject to?
I, I think we, we, I apologize for, I apologize for waffling on, on the issue, but when Mike tells me that there's some urgency here, it sort of changes my posture. I should have asked that first. I think we can approve this, and if the developer's not satisfied and wishes, you know, not to proceed based upon the utility's action, then he's not going to proceed.
Okay.
All right? All right, then, we need a motion on 22.
Kirkowski will make a motion that the council adopt resolution number 11609-042115, which would approve the Oakfield Village Edition Number Two Subdivision Development Agreement for the Design and Installation of Public Improvements at 400 East Lilly Drive. Tax key numbers 814-0256-000, and 814-9011-001.
Gail will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
25.
Gail will move to deny an operator's license to Andrew J. Dwyer, 9506 South Ryan Green Court Franklin due to falsification application.
Kirkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
26.
Gail will move to grant an operator's license to Tanner S. Kling, 8963 South 84th Street, Franklin.
Kirkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
29.
These items were submitted after the license committee met. Recommendation is to approve licenses as listed favorable backgrounds report were received.
Kirkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
25.
Gail will move to deny an operator's license to Linda, I, Miller, 4524 South 23rd Street, Milwaukee due to falsification application.
Kirkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhalen.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
26.
Gail will move to grant an operator's license to Tanner S. Kling, 8963 South 84th Street, Franklin.
Kirkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
27.
Gail will move to grant an operator's license to Samantha M. Guy, 2528 South 11th Street, Milwaukee.
Kirkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.